I'm gonna ask you again. Say what you say, because I can't hear you.
I said the spinning rainbow of doom I have, yeah. Okay. Poppy invitation.
Today is the first official day of fall, right?
Is it?
What was it, tomorrow?
Today is the last full day of summer.
So Beth, you might have to move in.
I don't know. You see? Let's see. No, I'm not on yet.
Wait, no, if you just stand up, I can tell you where. Little further this way. So if your seat is right there, you're on. Yeah, no, thank you. It is. Right. You'll get those each month. I don't think so. Yes, I do.
There you go.
All right, I'll go ahead. Excuse me. Go ahead and call the board meeting to order. Would all who wish join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One agenda adjustment, which would be to add item HC, a new position using extra funds related to COVID health issues. Is there a second to add that to the agenda?
One second.
Any further agenda adjustments? We'll go ahead and vote. Hold on in favor of the adjusted agenda. Looks like five to zero. Next up are the minutes for August 18. I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussions or corrections?
We didn't record the vote on adjournment, which is always five oh, but it should probably be on.
Yeah. Five oh.
That one usually is.
That was our four hour meeting, so I'm sure it's five oh. Did you get that, Rachel? Okay, so with the wait, I motioned, did we get a second?
I did.
Okay, sorry. So with the one correction proposed, any further adjustments? Go ahead and vote, all those in favor. Looks like five zero. Next up, we have warrants. The only ones I see are payroll warrant six and warrant six. So I would make a motion to approve payroll warrant six and regular warrant six. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, looks like five to zero. Next up is public comment. Floor is open. Go ahead and just unmute yourself and jump in if you'd like to make a public comment.
Hi, I just wanted to make a quick comment. So my kids both had, I think my daughter was the first case at ASA and then my son had COVID. And I just wanted to thank everyone. The school nurse, the teachers, the administration in RSU 26, you guys all did a great job. So just thank you to everyone and all the continued things that everyone's doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Next up, we have acknowledgements. I want to start with you, Beth.
I'll try to keep it shorter this time around. But I really just want to, well, I want to acknowledge everybody's continued diligence and hard work to keep everybody going and to support each other in these challenging times. And I also want to really give a special note of gratitude to Karen Martin and her team for all of the work that they've been doing with testing and follow up and contact, contract tracing. And I know Meredith, you've been part of that as well. I imagine, can't imagine how time can be made. Thank you.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Just, I may have said this before, but I've had some really thoughtful and constructive feedback from community members who are not parents of kids in the school system. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation for people who are part of our community, who pay attention to what's going on in schools, even though they don't have kids involved. I think that's really fantastic.
Great. I guess mine's similar to Beth, but just wanted to acknowledge again, you know, this has not been the year I think anybody expected, which has made things doubly hard. It's been a hard year for the students. It's been a hard year for the parents. It's been a hard year for the teachers. And I think it may be hard to single anybody out for hardest year, but if I did, I would probably single out the administration and the nursing staff. When you get those messages on weekends and 10 o'clock at night from the superintendent, it's not because they're on a time delay. They're being worked on. And I know from interactions that almost always she's back and forth with the principals before those messages go out. And those principals and superintendent are making phone calls and Karen Martin is. So it's just an extraordinary amount of work that's been going into contact tracing. And, you know, I think, as we heard, I think it's been done compassionately as well, but it's a lot of work. And, you know, it's not in anybody's job description. Obviously, it's a top priority, but it's not something people normally expect to do. So I just really appreciate the extra time and energy that certainly the administration and nurses are putting in. But really, you know, I think there's a big emotional adjustment for everybody this year going on. And by and large, in the district, we seem to be, seem to be making that adjustment. People turn at a corner and having fun in school and learning in school. And that's, that's openly what we're all here about. So thank you.
Yeah, I would just acknowledge Joanne McKinnon for a generation of orchestra instruments. So thank you to her for that.
Thank you. Meredith?
Yes, I would just echo what's been said and say, in addition to what's been said, you know, pool testing has really been a community effort. The second round, we had a number of teachers say, hey, I can do this for my class if you guys just send me the supplies. You know, we went over it week one and sent them more detailed directions. And so that's a huge help to have that distributed model of, you know, responsibility there, because it's a really tight window to collect the samples and get them out ready for shipment that day and with our numbers growing, right? So great participation means, you know, it's a big effort on the day of collection. So, you know, kudos to everyone who's been involved in the lift to get that off the ground. And people have been doing it a little longer than us. Have said that's, that's the hardest part, right? The initial lift. And week two already felt easier, even though we had, you know, more participants. So I think, I think it will continue to be the case as we move forward. And, you know, I, too, you know, obviously, the request for this position kind of circles back to some of the acknowledgements. It's just, you know, been in many ways the hardest phase of this, really. It seems like it's an unexpectedly harder time than we've faced before just because of the number of cases, you know, we haven't seen that. And all that, you know, that entails. So, you know, just thank you to everyone for their continued efforts. And, you know, families for, you know, understanding that we're trying to learn as we, as we encounter this unprecedented situation that we're facing. And, and staff who are, you know, trying to establish their classrooms and their routines and procedures, at the same time, they're trying to, you know, build something that is new and different. You know, in some grades, we haven't had to, all of last year, really, classroom, some classroom teachers didn't have to, you know, think about students in quarantine and their learning. So it's been a really, it's, it's felt like we've been in school a couple of months now just because of everything that's gone into it. So appreciate the efforts of everyone.
Any missed acknowledgements? Okay. We'll go ahead and move to reports. Want to start us off, Kristin?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Well, I will echo what everyone is saying, not really the beginning of the year that we had anticipated, but a huge thank you to the ASA staff and to all the ASA parents and all the ASA kiddos. It's, they, everyone has rallied and I'm just, I couldn't be happier to be where I am and appreciate everyone's efforts with everything. So we are in full swing and we are moving forward. We're loving the new spaces. It's just, we appreciate them more each day. Our kindergarteners are here now, full days, and they have done wonderful with that. Some tired kiddos, but boy, they're doing amazing. We have brought back volunteering, albeit a little bit different than normal. We have Alison Woodard as our volunteer coordinator, and she's holding some trainings. She held one last night and she'll have another one on Wednesday at 9:30 AM. Those are Zoom meetings. We are, for volunteering, we're going to be having our volunteers work to support things like photocopying and laminating and things like that outside of the classrooms, which is such a tremendous help to everyone, too. So we appreciate that. The ASA PTO is also in full swing and they've got lots of different events planned. There's a fundraiser Thursday at Sweet Frog from four to eight. So feel free to stop over for that. Make sure that, to say that you were there to support the ASA PTO. And they're bringing back the coffee cart, which we all loved and we appreciated it. Last year, they were able to set that up for our staff to enjoy lovely little snacks and coffee. So we're really looking forward to that again. So we've been doing as much as possible assessing our kiddos. And as kids come back from quarantine, we're also making sure that we are able to get those kiddos back with us and getting some assessing done with those guys. And on October 4th, the window will open for NWEA testing. So we will be jumping into that. Let's see. I did want to share, it was super cute. One of the first weeks we were here, the kids went into the cafeteria and they were sharing that they loved the new restaurant at ASA. So, and then the last thing I just wanted to touch on is our enrollment. It is, it's, it's pretty robust, to say the least. We've seen quite a number of move ins and Kate Crane has just been right on top of it with our kiddos coming in. And we're excited to welcome a lot of new faces to ASA. I think the word's getting out how ASA amazing it is here. So, but yeah, so things are going well.
Great, thank you. Any questions? We'll go ahead and move to Richard.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start by noting that the school year has gotten off to a strong start. And I think I talked about that the last time. But the, the, like, we're really settled into the, the new routines. Our sixth graders have adjusted well. And, and so I'm really pleased with how that's gone and how smoothly that's gone. I, much has been already said about the pooled testing, but I just wanted to make a comment and I'll keep it brief, I'm pooled testing, but it's really gone well. I've been really impressed with how, how it all worked. And hats off to students and staff for, for rolling up the sleeves and stepping in. And it's really, really cool how, how it works and, and how that has, I think, prevented other future outbreaks. So very impressed with that. A little update on our OMS dental clinic. With Alyssa Wade, dental hygienist, we have approximately 30 OMS students signed up and she's going to hold her first visits on October 13th and 14th. So looking forward to having Alyssa provide that service for our students. And there's, uh, we also have, we kind of collaborated with OHS on this. We have another 35, maybe 40 students from Orno High School that will be participating in the dental clinic as well. So, but they'll be on a different date. And what else do I have here today? The advisory program, we got that up, like, that's been up and running and we made some adjustments this year to kind of enhance what we've been offering. And, and obviously, we had a setback last year with the pandemic and, and how that impacted not only advisory, but all, all our school programming. But the, the following list illustrates some of the programming that is being planned for this fall. And this week, today, in fact, was the first day of our formal programming. So some of the things are physical education advisory. We have robotics, main student book awards, arts and crafts, school spirit themed activities are being planned. We have reading, yoga, study skills, and we have a new athletics advisory board. So lots of good things going on during advisory. And it's, it's nice that we're able to offer that this year again and expand our opportunities. Our fall NWEA testing schedule has been established. We are planning on, beginning on October 5th, with, I think, reading and mathematics on October 6th and language usage on October 7th. So we're going to do those three days in a row and wrap up our fall testing schedule. So that's, that's good news. The MYHOS, the Main Integrated Youth Health Survey, I shared information in previous reports on this, but our scheduled date is October 21st and that's for seventh and eighth grader. So that's going on. And we just learned last week that OMS has been selected to participate in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, NAEP, the NAEP assessment. And what that, that assessment, we don't get individual student results, but we, we are participating in a larger pool of testing that is used to compare educational progress of American students with their international peers. So our eighth graders will be participating on March 3rd in the NAEP assessment this year. And finally, last but not least, I wanted to report out on middle school athletics. So fall sports, obviously, it's underway and going well. And our teams are, has had some good success. I have numbers to report. Our football numbers are up significantly this year compared to last year, right? And, and if you recall, the previous year, we had very high numbers, but we're up to 18 students playing football this year. So that's good news. And our field hockey program is strong with 22 students participating. And our combined boys A and B soccer number is 31 boys playing soccer and 17 girls playing soccer. We just have one girl soccer team this fall. And our cross country numbers are down a bit. They're at nine. And often, that is a reflection of the strong showing in our other sports. While some students are committed to running, often students choose that as a second sport. And, but numbers are down in cross country this year. And if you do the math on that, that's about 68% of our students participating in athletics this fall. So good, good numbers there, 96 out of 142. So that's, that's looking pretty good this fall. And that's, that's what I have for, for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? No, thank you, Richard. We'll go ahead to the high school with Sam and Meredith.
Hello. Nice to see everybody tonight. To begin, I just want to further echo and give some examples of ways in which we really appreciate all that staff, students, community members are doing to help us during this time, including we did last week, change our bell schedule to include a third lunch period. Some of that was certainly due to spacing, to make sure that students could space out as they see fit to eat their lunch, but also due to just the length of time that students were going through the line to get their lunch. Didn't leave as much of a timeframe for them to eat that we would have preferred. So by doing three lunches, it gives them plenty of time to eat and it also allows them to space out because we still are using outside the gymnasium and the cafeteria. Another example is Mr. Sinclair generously agreed to take on a new study hall so that we could decrease the numbers of students in each study hall because some of them are quite large, making it feel really tight within the classrooms. And also, Mr. Hamel recently became our AM duty staff, which is to help us in the morning so that we can have two spaces for students to gather until the warning bell that they can go to advisory. Because especially the bus students, you know, they get there when the buses get there. So they needed a place to be able to sit and maybe have some breakfast and just start their day. So we appreciate everyone in helping and their flexibility in making those changes. I will add also that we did, we do have the dental clinic scheduled at the high school for early November. In October, it was a good problem in the fact that she was booked. So we are now early November scheduled to have our dental clinic come to work with our high school students. And then some other just celebrations and things to discuss about our school culture. Little Shop of Horrors is our fall musical. And they have over 40 students that came out to participate in the cast and crew. And everyone was welcome to participate. And they, the first costume team meeting is this weekend, but they've had numerous, numerous rehearsals. And they did want me to say a thank you to the Keith Anderson Center for allowing them to have some of the rehearsals there, as well as the performances, which will be on November 18th, 19th, 20th, and the 21st. Many other student clubs and opportunities have begun, such as GSA, French Club, Jazz Band, and even more, starting up this week and next. And so that's really exciting because it gives the students many opportunities to participate and be a part of their high school. But also, it just really is starting to feel like that culture that we all love is coming back. And it's just really, really exciting to see the numbers of participation in those areas. Additionally, we, with fall sports, our season has gotten off to a very, very successful start. For football, we have 36 students with about 75% of them being underclassmen. So it's been a rough start because they're a younger team, but they keep working hard and improving. The boys soccer team has 32 students. And they happen to be very deep and talented. They are actually on the older edge. But they were off to a very, very strong start with a four to zero record. But however, the last three opponents, we've had to postpone or cancel possibly due to COVID. The girls soccer team is equally doing well, 28 students involved in that with a two to two record at the end of last week. Field hockey is breaking a ton of records in field hockey history, which I do know a little bit about because I used to be a field hockey coach. They have 18 in their roster. And they have beaten Old Town, they've beaten Dexter. Their current record is six to zero. And they really are looking like they're going to be one of the top teams in Class C. So that's really exciting. Cross country is still, is strong with 23. They have only been beaten by the Class B MDI at the Elsors Invitational. Otherwise, they've won each of their meets. And the prep for this week is a long running Old Town sectionals where they'll run against some of the great competitions in the area. Our cheerleaders are 13 strong and they are just offer, awesome with the support that they give our football team every single week. And golf has 11. And they are currently six, eight to three, excuse me, heading into their senior day, which was today against Old Town. And they will be trying to defend their PVC champion this weekend. And then just before Meredith Diamond speaks a little, we also wanted to give a congratulations out to Madeline Holworth. She's a senior who became the first female Eagle Scout in Arnold Troop 478 and Catatana Area Council's 100-plus year history. So that is really, really exciting. And she's also the only second female Eagle Scout in the state of Maine. So we're extremely proud of her. I don't know if you know her, but she's an amazing human. And so I just wanted to give her a little shout out in this opportunity. Meredith?
Thanks, Sam. And, and the fact that, that Madeline is the first female Eagle Scout in the Catatana in the Katana region is not the end of our shout-outs for her tonight. We also would like to announce that Madeline is a twenty-twenty-two National Merit semifinalist. She is one of just seventy-four students to earn this recognition in the state of Maine. Um, and she will go on to compete, um, to be a National Merit finalist, uh, which will give her a chance at, one of seventy-five-hundred National Merit scholarships worth roughly thirty million dollars. So we are, we're very proud of that. And we also learned recently, uh, that Thomas Owen is in a National Merit Commended Scholar. One of thirty-four thousand students from across the country who on the twenty-twenty PSATs earned that recognition. Um, and these are just two of many examples of the way in which even in the face of, um, all the challenges that students and faculty and communities are facing now, we are having, um, you know, continued traditions and then the bringing back of traditions. Um, uh, last night I, um, was really lucky to be one of the jurors who attended in-person presentations for this year's graduates with distinction. Um, and Jim Bolteal does an incredible job of facilitating these, you know, projects of inquiry for students and cultivating in them a sense of, of, you know, what academics, um, you know, what being an academic means and what it involves and, and what it looks like and then what the sharing of that learning looks like. And, um, so we have our Ella, Ellen Rahill was announced today as the, the first twenty-twenty-two graduate with distinction to have completed those requirements. Um, along with some of the other, um, you know, return to traditions. We have the PSATs coming up, the school day PSAT coming up October thirteenth. Because we moved away from the SAT as a state assessment, this is now an optional, um, an optional test that we are, are funding as a district. We have forty-eight students who are registered for this test. And, um, we also, uh, along with the middle school, we'll be holding our, our NWEAs the first week of October. Um, and, you know, while that work and momentum continues to move us forward, we are also, uh, you know, focused on our recovery as, as a community. And one of the efforts that we have focused on, um, here at the high school is our student success ed tech, Miranda Benefield. She has done a fantastic job of, you know, beginning to scaffold a system here at the high school through which students who are short credits for graduation at this point in their careers can, um, make up some of their credits from last year. She's worked with the math department to identify students who are eligible, the English department to identify students who are eligible, and cultivated based on those conversations, um, a list of students with whom she is working on discipline-specific strategies to recover these credits. She is branching out to social studies and has begun a conversation with the social studies department about, um, social studies credits from last year. And we anticipate that once progress reports are, um, are released, that her caseload will expand to include students, uh, who we identify as needing additional supports this year and recognition of the fact that the pandemic is far from over as arts challenges. So we are, we are, um, well on our way to a successful twenty-one, twenty-two school year here at OHS.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? What's, I mean, it's fun to finally hear about the education and extracurriculars, co-curriculars going on across all three schools. It's, uh, taken a lot of work to get there and, uh, it's, but it is what we're all about. So that's great. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to the superintendent's report.
So to begin with, I just want to, um, remind the school community that we have an early release day tomorrow. And, um, we're going to put that time to great use with staff. Um, all school's, uh, staff will be engaged with working on their quarantine learning, um, plans and framework and just, you know, having some additional time to get those, um, established and, uh, developed. In addition, um, there's going to be some professional development offered, uh, around some of the tech tools that, that people, um, are using and have. And then, um, OHS in particular is going to use that time to launch their, uh, NEAS work with staff for their accreditation, uh, process that they're starting, um, the, the process for. So that, that, we have a full slate of activities that we plan to use tomorrow's early release time for. Want to also just highlight the, um, the, the launch of the RAD, um, Town of Orno partnership for, uh, the after-school program. That being how that ASHA has been, uh, really successful, uh, in talking with Kristin. And she's been, you know, super impressed with how the staff has rolled that program out. And, and what she's seeing and, you know, their safety protocols. You know, there, I think they had more interest expressed than what we have, what, what they're seeing for the initial program enrollment. So right now, the cafeteria is sufficient for their needs, but as their program grows, you know, they might need to shift to the gym. But that's just, you know, depending on what they find in their numbers. And, you know, so far that's a really nice partnership. It, it's, it's nice to have a second space like the cafeteria. We've never had that in the past, um, because, you know, during times of year when we have programming happening after school at ASHA, it's nice to have the, the school-based, uh, sponsor programming. It's nice to have a couple of spaces to be able to house a program like the, the after-school program because it's a, it's a real need in our community. And I'm, I'm really glad that it's been, uh, kind of returned to, um, existent by the town and, and, uh, humane, um, especially, you know, with Old Town Rec having to dismantle their program. It really fills a need that was kind of unexpected and, and created a gap in, in our community. And so that is going well. Um, one thing that, that's not going well, uh, is, uh, we have some staffing shortages that, I know I've mentioned it before, it, it's ongoing. You know, we're, we're trying new things just to see if we can get more applicants, uh, for, uh, custodial, um, positions. Um, we're down, um, one staff member that's our, um, full employee and then down two from our contracted service, uh, custodial services that they're trying everything they can do to get those, so. And then in addition, we're down two food service staff, um, right now, which is just super challenging as well. We're still down ed techs. Our sub-list is growing, but still, you know, not large enough. And so, you know, we just really have, uh, some, some serious areas in need. You know, we're trying to do some brainstorming to figure out how we can make the jobs more competitive with. Really, I think we're, we've been working to become more competitive with other schools. We're still not there. We talked about that. And we're on a trajectory to try to get us there. But right now, I think it's more, um, particularly with food service and custodial, um, with public sector being able to be competitive there. You know, every, every sector is really having to, um, you know, do things to, to attract employees right now. It's everywhere, you know, from your fast food restaurant to, um, every segment really is struggling here. So I just, uh, you know, as we develop potential ideas, we might be bringing you some, some ideas for the board to consider to help with this. And, you know, if you have ideas for recruitment that you want to share, please bring them our way. I mean, we're, we're advertising outside of the, when we advertise for instructional positions or administrative positions, we typically can be successful with serving schools, which is the big school advertising, um, platform that, um, most people who are in education in Maine or the Northeast know about serving schools. So you can attract those employees through there and our website. But for these other types of positions, we're having more success with Indeed and, you know, going out to other, um, platforms, but we're just not getting them right now. So we're going to try, you know, to get something on the Bangor Daily website. And see if that helps get more exposure. So that's what our current strategy is. So it's a real struggle and I just wanted to share that, I, you know, I hate to end on the bad news, but that really is something that we're having a difficult moment.
Quick question about that last part, which is just that, um, I can imagine that for unionized employees here at the school, it's making their jobs tougher when there are fewer people around. Have we partnered with the unions to turn and address this collaboratively?
Yes, um, I've had a, a conversation with, with the OA president, Shawna Goodall. And, you know, we talked through some potential ideas and we were both, you know, going to kind of talk those through with our respective groups. I've had some conversations with Brian. I think she's having conversations with her team. And also, you know, just kind of ask around to see if we're hearing things other districts are doing right now to try to overcome them. So yes, we've been in some conversation about this, but haven't gotten to the point of having solutions.
Great. Yeah, I'm really glad that we're like involving the unions and helping to solve this problem.
But it, you know, it absolutely is harder on the other employees who are having to, and, and, you know, I, people are, are working exceptionally hard because of the circumstance around. And then, you know, when you add to that employee shortages, it's just extremely difficult. So.
Are these all full-time positions, the food service and the custodial?
Yes. Yep. But certainly we would be open to other, you know, if someone can only work part-time, we're open to anything, but they are designed as full-time positions. They come with full benefit.
I mean, that's the other thing to advertise if we're, I'm sure it's on the ads, but benefits, right? That's the trade-off between private public is we typically have much better benefits than you would get, uh, you know, private restaurant or something. So.
I mean, we could probably be more explicit about that because I think we just say, have a phrase like competitive benefits package. So it might be that that's something to try to be more explicit about the benefits package.
And perhaps adding something to, you know, will consider part-time, you know, those interested in part-time. I ask that too because I think of our potentially, you know, our community as, especially the part-time. Perhaps, you know, that might be a way for some people to find that, um, more interesting. Right. Because it might fit within their family schedules and so forth. So I'm even thinking like the, you know, the ASHA Facebook page, the middle school Facebook page, you know, advertising to within our community.
Yep.
May also help.
Yeah, we put things out on the RSU page. Those are not school pages, so they can perhaps be shared to those by the numbers. But yeah.
Trying to think of like who, you know, how to get more casual, you know.
Exposure for these opportunities. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we do push out job ads periodically to the website. So we can, when we reframe these, I think it's time to push them out on social media again and see if we can get traction.
I think Beth's point in particular might be useful for, especially for substitute teachers and especially at ASHA, right? Because I know that's been a place where we've been able to recruit subs quite successfully in the past as parents of ASHA students who, you know, we've had parents who've been staying home with their kids and now their kids are in school and they're not ready to completely re-enter the workforce. But the idea of working maybe a couple of days a week and especially if it's in the same building where their kid is going to school, they find that appealing. So, um, I think in particular, that market for subs might be something that, you know, targeted message to ASHA parents from Kristen saying, hey, these are the requirements, sub, you could, you're free to do it as often or as little as you'd like. We'd love to have you. We're sure you'd be helping out your school and the community. I think you could probably pick up some because historically we've been able to get subs that way, um, from that ASHA parent tool.
Yep. Good, good suggestion. So that's all the discrete items on the. Are there any other questions?
Anything else before we move on to the COVID discussion with the superintendent? Nothing else. Okay. Next up, COVID discussion.
Yeah, so, um, you probably, I know the board saw the email I sent out last Friday. That was just a summary of several different, um, points of information. One of which, uh, was about full testing and the results of our second round that we had at that point. And I did a follow-up the next Friday when we had the complete result. But then also, you know, the case count where it is now, and that's changed a bit since Friday. And about the, um, outbreak status that was, um, communicated to us by the CDC. And as I said, you know, the CDC is just overrun right now. We, we met outbreak status the first week at school by their definition. It's, you know, three cases from three different households is what they're calling outbreak. So it, it doesn't intersect at all with anything about transmission. So, you know, all of our schools are in outbreak status really, if we're thinking about the definition purely. And I think most schools probably are. Um, so we'll probably be getting the call from CDC about the other schools in a week or so. But, you know, just to kind of, um, summarize that, um, when you're in, when you're officially in outbreak status, you know, the CDC consults with you around, um, kind of, you know, about your cases and they help, they just think, help you think through like your investigation strategy, your quarantine strategy, or your contact tracing strategy, mitigation efforts. And really they said, you know, we're doing everything right, right? We're, we're following the SOP as they would like us to be and, and want us to be. And, um, you know, it, there's this clear message of this is not about school closure. And that's why I tried to outline that in the letter so that people knew the messages we were getting, um, from the CDC indicated that, you know, that from everything the CDC is hearing from us, it's safe to be in school. And beyond that, it's really ongoing consultation and guidance if we have questions and as new cases come up, you know, seeing if there's, um, you know, any, any evidence of transmission. And, um, as I, you know, have been thinking about our conversation at the last meeting uh, about what would, um, cause me to think differently about, you know, in-person instruction. I think it comes down to school transmission. And, um, once, you know, we see evidence of school transmission, then we have to consider what other prevention, what other mitigation efforts can we, can we try to save this off? And, um, and I think that's what the CDC is, is wanting us to, to be considering if, um, we see school transmission. And so, you know, I think that's the, that's the step that would be, um, uh, the time to take another step forward or a more restrictive, I guess, stance toward some of the good stuff that you just heard about, right? The, the activities that we are engaged with that are really so meaningful to, um, students experienced at school. But that, you know, sometimes like last year, we, we reconsidered those as we were in other frames, um, through the school year. But, you know, I come back, I was in two meetings with the commissioner of education last week where I asked this question about, you know, my community is asking, what's the threshold? And why haven't you provided a threshold? Um, and they're not going to, at least not right now. The, the answer is the clear priority in the CDC guidance and what the main CDC is, is telling the Department of Education is, the priority is for in-person instruction and the information that, you know, they're basing that on is the fact that they see the risks, um, of, are the benefits of in-person instruction and the need for that outweighing the risk. And so that's the answer. And, um, so I, you know, I, I have had, have engaged, you know, with some of you to kind of share that update and, um, had a couple of correspondence, uh, email chains with some parents who had that question. And that's really where, where, um, the guidance I'm receiving and, and all along, you know, I feel like, you know, we can, we can make it, we can make it up on our own and, and do our research and develop our own frameworks. But that's just not what I'm comfortable doing. And I think it's been, it served us well to follow the guidance we've been given. So that's what I bring to you. I think we should continue to follow the guidance we're giving and as we have questions, seek clarification. But, um, that's, that's the guidance we're given. And, um, you know, the end of the first week at school, we made a decision to put a whole class on quarantine based on what we were seeing, not because the CDC picked up the phone and said, Ms. Martin, you know, Ms. Higgins and Ms. Briggs, we need to put this class on quarantine. But that was like, we got the call three weeks later, right? So we're using common sense where we see patterns that, that aren't really, we haven't seen school transmission, but it seems like we should put this class on quarantine. So I just want to tell the school community, I mean, we're making those decisions where we think it's important to, um, but. But, you know, I, I, I think that what, everything we've seen, with one small exception that I can't get to the details of, is coming in from the outside of the community. It's coming in either family-based and their siblings or, you know, we, in talking with the families, we learned that, you know, this child was exposed to something and, or sometimes they just don't know, right? And we don't know. And we, we can't find any connections. And so, we're not seeing the school transmission that would lead us to feel like it's time to take that next step, whatever, you know, and, and what that next step is really would depend on conditions. And so it's hard to say what that step is, but, you know, I, I would say, you know, people ask, well, why, why don't we go back to eating lunch in classrooms at AESA? Well, classrooms at AESA are more, are crowded this year. They're not like they were last year. They're, you know, distancing is better in most instances in the cafeteria or in the alternate space than what can be assured in classrooms. There are classrooms that are exceptions to that, but not every classroom offers the spacing that, that we feel like we can provide in those other spaces. So, you know, I feel like through these first three and a half weeks, we've taken small, we've made small adjustments everywhere. I mean, you heard Sam talking about some adjustments. You know, we've done it at every school. We've kind of outlined them at, at AESA. And we've done it in places where we felt like when we first started contact tracing, these are our vulnerabilities. These are the places that are the trickiest, that, that we think there's the most, you know, risk. And so that's where we've made adjustments. So, you know, the, the update on cases, we, you've seen them trickle out in emails, but, you know, overall, our cases, we're up to 21 in our district. You know, they're heavier in the younger grades, right? Thirteen of those are in grade six or below, right? So that data is, shares a, you know, really compelling message, right? About the risk for the younger age students. You know, thankfully, those students are returning successfully and are not struggling with the virus at this point. But the corresponding to that, you know, our pool testing data is, is increasing all the time. The update I sent you in the board packet was, but now five days old. I looked again this weekend and every school had gone up at least 5% since I emailed you that, you know, in the last week. So, you know, our, our rate when we tested last week was 62% of our students overall were involved in pool testing. And now it's up to 69% of our overall student population. And, you know, AESA's at 70, well, this was Sunday. I haven't had time to look since Sunday. AESA's at 73%, OMS 75, OHS at 58. You know, and when we started two weeks ago, OHS was at 34%. So they've seen a pretty dramatic increase. And, and really, all the schools have seen a, a big increase in participation. And, you know, it's, it's neat to walk into classes and there are some kids who aren't signed up yet and they want to. They want to participate. They want to join the line and, and get the swab. And, you know, so the kids are excited about this for the most part. We're not having to swab noses for children. They're able to do this themselves. You're seeing their classmates doing it. It's super easy. So it's really been a successful rollout and we're seeing that in the numbers. And I would consider, you know, we've sent in 105 tubes, tubes of swabs pools over the two administrations and we've had three positive pools. That's a good, I, I feel really good about that success rate and, and what it says about our community and the health of our school. You know, we just, we want to have more and more people sign up if, if we can keep increasing these numbers. I think it just helps the survey have better surveillance on what's happening and have everyone feel more confident and comfortable with the safety of the school.
Did, did we test Monday this week, Meredith, or are we still on Thursday?
We're not doing it this week because we're switching to Tuesday of the next week.
Tuesday of next week.
Yeah, so, so to make the change, we had to go a little longer than a week. So this week, we're switching to the next Tuesday.
Okay.
And that's really going to be a better rhythm. Because just getting it on Friday, maybe not till Saturday, and then you have to wait maybe until Monday to test is really not where we want to be. So we had to go, we had to go more than a week. They don't allow you to test less than a week, it's not. So, so we went to the Tuesday administration and that'll really be a nice schedule for us to be on with the testing.
So if we test on Tuesday, we would find the results on Wednesday or on Thursday?
Either.
Either?
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're seeing, like, we got the, we expected we would get all the results together, but it's school by school, you know, and it depends on, I guess, where they end up in the stack. So we got OMS and OHS early Friday morning. And then AESA didn't come in till Saturday morning, so, you know.
So for the follow-up testing, I was just, is, is there any way, so I understand if we get the, the test, it's the middle of the school day, you know, it's the middle of the day Thursday, it's the middle of the day Friday, and we get a positive pool back. We can easily, you know, go right to those kids and do the follow-up testing. Do they get pulled out of class to do the follow-up testing?
Yes.
And then if we get the positive test back and it's, you know, eight o'clock at night, is there any way to like catch them before they enter the school building to do the follow? I mean, like, so what's, and then what the turn, that's a turnaround rapid test, right? We've got the results immediately here. So are we catching them, is there a way to catch the kids before they enter the school building?
That's what we tried to do when we found out, well, I'm trying, it was the first week of testing and that we got the results at night, but it was Friday night. We had students come in Monday and report straight to the nurse's office.
Okay.
So it, it just depends, right? I mean, as I'm, you know, we attend these meetings with the statewide commissioner conference and, and this was said by a superintendent, and I totally agree. I mean, at some point, we have to say, okay, I'm, I can't, I can't send out emails at, you know, 11:30. There's just a line that we have to say, we're doing everything we can, but there has to be a limit. And so, as much as we can, we're going to communicate promptly, but there may be times when we have to wait and notify the next morning. And so, you know, ideally, we would like to be able to shoot something out to families to say, you know, have your child report to the nurse's office upon arrival at school for follow-up testing. That's the ideal if we find out after hours. If we find out during the day, we, you know, bring the, the students to another area and space them out and do the testing one at a time with a nurse. So that's how we did it on Friday with the middle to one high school pool. So, you know, I think, I have another question about, you know, can, can we allow families to have tests and do tests at home? And we are not allowed to give out our tests. We had some families the first time around ask if, because it was after hours, and it was actually on a weekend, and they wanted to know if they could go get independent testing. And sure, you know, absolutely, you can do that. If, I think on this Tuesday through Friday schedule would be a lot more convenient, especially right now. We can test people a lot faster than you can typically go and find an appointment somewhere. So, you know, the, the pool testing is designed to keep kids in school, right? So having, being a part of a positive school does not mean that people need to stay home and not come to school the next day. So that's part of the design of the program. It specifically says that, you know, kids report to school, you test them the next morning for day one, and if everyone's negative, they continue with the school day, test again day two.
But with, I mean, with the design of the test, if you get a positive pool, it's almost a 100% guarantee that one of those students has COVID.
Well, I did bring my notes about the errors.
I understand that that first pool test is really low false positive rate.
Yeah, I, there was a, there was a percentage, and I wrote it down when I went to webinar in May, and I can't remember now.
Like 2%?
Yeah, it's a very small amount.
So, yeah, the false amount of it, often, and I think so far always in this district, nine out of the 10 kids don't have COVID.
Right.
Right, so you don't want to create disincentives to participating in pool testing where, like, oops, if you have the bad luck to be in the pool with somebody who has COVID, you're going to start missing school. So far, the reason the code, the pool testing is taken off is because the state structures this incentive really smartly the other way. But if you participate in pool testing, you get to be in school more. So I just, I just hate to start, you know, if you get it the night before and you can direct them to the nurse's office before the school starts, that's obviously the best solution, but if the test comes in at noon, you know, I know we're pulling them out as quickly as we can. And I, I hate to create a disincentive for the nine kids who don't have COVID.
I just want to make sure that like, there's a recognition that like, yes, that we, we still have one positive case coming into the school. And what I'm hearing from you is that every effort is being made to make sure that we do everything we can to get that follow-up test done as quickly as possible, and that's really nice to hear.
Sure, yeah, and.
And but just, but like, let's say it out loud, like, there is someone with COVID coming into the school. And if that's something where, you know, let's say there's someone who's more cautious who's in the pool and they get a positive notification, they might say like, oh, hey, I'm not going to send my kid until I know it's just, you know, one other kid and they've been isolated, because I don't want to risk having, you know, two hours of overlap for my child when there's a known positive. So I just want to make sure that like, that's out there and that, you know, I don't expect you to be waiting around at 1:00 in the morning. But for people who are really attentive, if there's a 7:00 AM email that goes out saying, hey, you were in a positive pool, that gives a parent an opportunity to say, oh, okay, like, my child will stay home for today and let's just see what happens, or, or I'll go and do the, the testing outside the school and meet up with someone and get that done. I just want to be, you know, absolutely not disincentivize people from being part of it and not mandating that, you know, people have to stay out of school, but also creating the opportunity for people who are more cautious about health to make decisions on that.
Yeah, I mean, your basic point's true, right?
Yeah.
With 98% probability, at least one person in that pool is sick. But on the other hand, in most cases, they're probably pre-symptomatic and we're catching it, you know, that's the whole point of pool testing. We're, we're still better off, you know.
Oh, it's, it's a great program.
And then doing the pool testing. And, yeah, and, yeah. I think at some level, it comes down, we have to trust the administration. I have yet to hear of a case where, say, you know, because they do this, and they're like, oh, we're doing that, right? At some point, we just have to trust that, you know, they're doing everything that we can do.
I think Meredith and her staff are doing a fine job on this, and I wouldn't recommend any changes whatsoever.
Well, and when, when families ask that question the first time, because we had a chance to call on Friday night, right? Parents, you know, one parent said, I'd like to keep my kid home until the positive case is identified and I'm going to go have a test and, you know, I'll let you know what the result is. And, and that's fine.
Great.
Yeah, no problem. But I guess I personally am not going to convey the message in the email that, that would suggest that, I think even suggesting that that's okay suggests that maybe you should consider this. And I will, I, so I guess that's my, I'm a little uncertain about including that in the message, but if parents ask for that, we'll let them know, sure, that's fine. I mean, I would act, I would prefer that people came here and let us either drive by or, you know, have their kids come in or do the drive-by test, because I think it would give us firsthand knowledge about, you know, the pool and be able to report, you know, promptly the, the results of the.
Need them all to be tested, right?
Right.
And a way to best ensure they're tested is come to school the next day. If they don't come to school the next day, then it's on the parent to go and get them tested. So the smart thing to do would be to have them all come in the next day and get them tested as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Otherwise, leaving it up to chance.
But, Mark, what I'm saying is, we have to be able to give people the option.
They already have the option.
But, but hold on a second.
They have the option, Patrick.
What I'm hearing from Meredith is if someone inquires, that's great, but what I'm getting is a lot of questions to the community from people who haven't been in a pool yet and they want to know what happens there. So I'm just.
Well, why wouldn't you have the option to get your child tested whenever you want? That's, of course you have an option to do that.
That wasn't my question. My question was, are we okay with people saying, I'm going to hold my kid out?
Whether we're okay or not is irrelevant, right?
No.
Parents always have the option to get their kid tested, Patrick. It doesn't make any sense.
I'm asking, Mark, if it's okay for someone to pull their kid out of school that day?
Of course it is, Patrick. It's their child.
Well, that hasn't been necessarily understood by the community, because I'm getting questions about it, right? And, you know, like, I've had questions, like, do I get penalized if I hold my kid out of school because I'm worried about COVID? So.
That's a different question.
Like, either.
I think that's a different question, yeah.
Right, so, I, I think, I fully support the pool testing program. I don't, I think some parents have been concerned that there hasn't been kind of like, hey, you know, we've got this program, it's great, it's catching cases, that's definitely communicated. And also, we've got kids with COVID coming to school, the risk is low, and we're getting them out as soon as possible. I feel like I got really good information from you tonight that I didn't have before. I really appreciate that. And I think probably the people who are most concerned are either listening tonight or they're going to ask me about it tomorrow, or the last someone else about it tomorrow. So I'm, I'm not trying to be antagonistic in any way. I just want to make sure that the people who are most concerned about this have as many options as possible. I recently had a conversation with a parent of a school district student who is also a physician, works at EMMC. And we were talking about families who have vulnerable family members. And the thing he said to me was, Pat, there are a lot more people who are vulnerable than you realize in your community. You know, we don't think about it, but there's a lot of people. And it might be people who a grandparent is a caregiver and they're going through chemotherapy right now. That's someone who's highly vulnerable. Might be someone who has, you know, respiratory issues who's highly vulnerable. So I just want to make sure that people who have greater concerns than the average parent understand, and it sounds like this is 100% the case, and thank you, but there's a lot more flexibility than we necessarily see in the official policy, right? That's what I'm hearing.
We're not actively encouraging people to keep their kid home, but as Mark said, it's just, you know, state law. If somebody keeps their kid home, they keep their kid home. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think your question though bridges, there, there are two separate issues that, that come to mind with that last, that, that you said. One, one is around pool testing and I'm in a positive pool, can I keep my kid out? You know, maybe arrange with you to do drive-by testing or maybe go get testing somewhere else. And, and so the answer to that is yes, absolutely. But the policy, the, the program doesn't require that. And actually, it, it, the goal is kind of the opposite of that, but that's okay, right? But the other thing is around, you know, my family member is immunocompromised or, you know, is at high risk and keeping a child out because of that. And, and that's really a different conversation. It's something I think under the quarantine learning plan that, that we need to talk about, because there are different, I think, levels of service that I think we have said we can provide. And I think that that's a level of service that, that I need to be transparent and say, we're not, we're not set up to provide that. And so, we should talk if that's the expectation that the board is asking of us. I think it's, it's different to provide an accommodation for quarantine learning for a student who's out in quarantine or for a student who has a positive case in their class. And so, there's something that, you know, has been communicated to that family that's of particular risk, right? We send communications to everyone who's in the class of a positive case, whether they are a close contact or not. And if there are any close contacts, even with an exception, you know, the list of exceptions, you still get either a call or a separate email outlining that. And obviously, close contacts with no exception, so.
That includes in the same classroom, correct?
Right, right.
So even if they're 20 feet away and not a close contact, they're still getting notified.
Right, and that's what I, I, I forget what day it was, but I think it was last night's email.
Yeah.
Where I, I wanted to outline that, because that was a common question I was getting. And I was just sending quick answers, quick answers, you know, to get those feedback, that feedback to people who, who asked that question. But I think, I was trying to clarify that, because I think that's something that needed clarifying. And so, those people at times have said, hey, you know, this is in my class, we feel like there's a lot of risk. We would like to have our child out for a few days. And that's what the quarantine learning is also able to serve. But it's beyond that, that it, it feels like we're maybe going beyond the scope of what our intention was when we worked together on what kind of services we would be providing this year for out-of-school kind of learning support. And so, and that's, that's a tricky line to, to figure out where to draw. And, and so, I, I guess when we get to the quarantine learning discussion, and maybe we're there, but I'd like to maybe pause about other things and then let Shawna and Meredith talk a little bit, because they've been working hard on those documents to, to roll those out. But are there other questions? We've kind of meandered around several things I wanted to hit, but I think we've hit everything I wanted to mention. Other than, sorry, one other thing. Karen Martin has gotten us on the books for an early November vaccine clinic in the event that the, the new window rolls out as it's being talked about right now in late October. So that's great. I was super thankful. So that's great. I was super thankful she was very proactive to get that on the books with PCHC.
Would that be able to accommodate both the sixth graders at OMS and the kids?
Right, we would do any, you know, five through 11. Um.
Awesome.
And, you know, there's some seventh graders.
Right, right, a few, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then we're also, I was talking with her today, I think what we're going to do is we're going to survey, um, everyone else right now to see if there's enough demand to hold a clinic here before then for others, right? So any other individuals in the school community who are eligible right now, do we have a critical mass to go ahead and offer a clinic? Or if not, we can just connect them with where they can go to get, to get an appointment. So that's the other thing that we're doing right now. Are we, we're going to do the survey probably later this week. So I think that was my last update. Beth, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, um, a couple. Um, one is more, uh, which is six questions, which is, um, how are we holding up on Bionax, Bionax, I always say Bionax, Bionax, uh, pass, you know, because I, I'm fully aware that they're very hard to come by.
Yeah, we're good. Karen put in a replenishment order at the right time. So our, our supply's good right now. Um, and we're, we're being a little more, um, um, I guess, careful about offering testing to, to everyone who is a close contact. Uh, because we just, we don't have the supply for that. So when we're contacting families who are a close contact and they want to be tested, we ask them to seek testing outside. And if they have trouble, to contact Nurse Martin. Um, but if they're symptomatic, if they're asymptomatic, absolutely, we'll help you out, you know, if you're having trouble. Um, or if you're a close contact and you're symptomatic, we really want to help you get tested right away so we can know that and do contact tracing, um, if it's positive. So we've been a little less accommodating, I think, to be able to test anyone that asks because we're trying to preserve our supply, um, until there's less of a shortage. Um, so kudos to Karen Unsull, she just got on for, for being proactive and getting that supply replenishment order before things got serious.
Just going to say, her name has come up several times. Kudos to Karen for being proactive.
Yeah, I know. Karen came on too late. You've been, you've been praised a lot tonight, Karen. So we're good right now. But I, interestingly, before this meeting, I had a superintendent thread ask if anyone had spare tests because they're out and they need 40 follow-up pool tests for tomorrow and they don't have them. And another district said we're out too. So this is a real supply chain issue that needs to get fixed quickly. I know it's not just schools, but it's a real challenge.
And it will probably take a while to get fixed. So I'm glad. Thank you, Karen. Um, and then I just wanted to thank you, Meredith, for, um, being so responsive to the questions from the last board meeting, you know, around, like, I know I'd ask, like, what's the threshold? Because I think, um, you know, granted, well, I'm hearing it sounds, if there's community, um, school transmission, you know, then there's going to be pause, not pause of school, but pause from the administration thinking through what, whether. I really, I really appreciate just the way that you, um, continue to think about that and, um, share that with us and with the school community. Um, there was something, it's a little bit more for Patrick, but, so I, my, my kiddo was in the first school testing of, that was positive. And I think if that didn't happen, I probably would have a ton more questions. Um, and it was the Friday evening phone call, you know, and it was like a little bit of panic in our house. And over the course of the weekend, like, at some point, we, you know, I think Meredith emailed and said, change of plans, kid goes straight to the nurse's office Monday morning, you know? So I do feel like, um, you know, and, and this is a message to the community too, right? There's a level of responsiveness that I feel Meredith and Karen are doing in the moment, you know, as they, as we kind of take what, what is the theory of the guidance and then apply it. And that, I have to say, was, um, was just amazing to see and to, to experience. But, you know, if I hadn't gone through that, like, the first week of school testing, I can understand how other parents would be wondering questions as well. Um, it happened to be that my partner talked to Karen on the phone, you know, and, um, and then I sent her a quick email and was going to, you know, try to find her a test, but I'm hopeful, see what we can do and we'll let you know if we learn to positive, but, um, so, and then they all went in and it was a big emotional event for them. And it was, you know, I think very bonding. Which is something we don't talk about, but it is part of it. And as they waited and were nervous and also concerned about each other. And, uh, you know, they, they were spaced out, you know? I think just sometimes if you haven't been through it, you don't know, and it's, and it's scarier, right? That, we will, for uncertainty, that can be the way it works for people. But, and I imagine it will probably, you know, now that the timeframe's different, it'll be different. But I really, I'm so glad that, that training piece was only a couple of pool testing weeks. Just, just fair for everyone.
Sure, agreed. Yeah, thank you for that feedback because, you know, the, the guidance is just that, it's, and the best way to learn is by doing it. And we've learned a lot the first couple of weeks. We learned a lot the first three and a half weeks of school, right? And so I, I, I feel like at times it seems like, well, gosh, why didn't we already expect that or anticipate that and have a plan for it? But, you know, we just, we continue to be surprised by what this new school year brings, right? And I'm sure there are people out there that say, well, it shouldn't have surprised you. You should have anticipated that and had that plan ready. Well, we don't. And we're sorry, it's, it's new and different this year. It, it, I know that seems odd for people to hear, but it's just different. Um, and so, you know, we're trying to adjust as we find things that need adjustment. And we found plenty of things that need adjustment and committed to doing that. But all of last year was really like that too, but just in a different way, right? We changed constantly last year from the start to the finish. There were things we learned all the time. And so I think if, and I know, I think I've said this before, if you, if you think you understand COVID and know exactly what to do, you know, that's your first mistake because it's just constantly a game changer, so.
I mean, just to kind of end on a positive note, I think it's, you know, we're three weeks in, which I admit is, um, early days still, but I think so there is some support for this in other literature, right? So we've had a lot of cases. That's not surprising. COVID in Penobscot County is about to one in a thousand people is coming down sick every day, right? It's not, it's grim out there in Penobscot County. And we got a thousand people in our school community and we're seeing about a case today. We're, you know, for better and for worse, public schools reflect our community. And there's a lot of ways in which it's really wonderful that public schools reflect our community. But public schools reflect our communities. These cases are aiding our kids and maybe even a little higher rate in the unvaccinated population. And, um, for the population that can't get vaccinated, but it shouldn't be a shocker that these cases are coming in the schools. But, um, we're not transmitting in the schools. And, you know, I read a article recently, San Francisco Public Schools, I don't know how many schools that is, 100 schools, I guess, had all spring and so far this fall, they started three weeks earlier than we did, but had a single in-school transmission incident. LA County and, and in California, the trackers are, I'll just say it, less understaffed than we are in Maine. So they were actually helping to track whether cases were in school transmission or not in school transmission. So they had extra resources to that. So it was a very thorough examination. LA Public Schools, which has got to be like a thousand schools, they had two tenths of a percent, 1 in 500 cases that came in the door were actually from in-school transmissions. And 99.8% of the cases were coming from the community and not from in-school transmission. So I think, you know, it's just pretty clear, if we want to listen to the science, listen to the CDC. You know, we're not going to be perfect. Two tenths of a percent is still two tenths of a percent. But, but there are a lot of ways that we can make our schools safe and be safe and have football show choir, not show choir, a musical, right, these things happening. Um, which, let's not kid ourselves, last year, yes, the parents had more flexibility, but there was a measurable decrease in, um, learning that happened in our students. And not as big as it is in other districts, but there was a measurable decrease. And there was, um, I don't know, we have a quantitative measure, but for sure, SES was affected. So I, I, I think there's a lot to celebrate about the fact that we can, you know, COVID is not better. In fact, it's twice as bad in Penobscot County as it was in January. But our science and our knowledge of, um, combating the disease is enough of a different place. It's not perfect. It's not safe. Clearly, if it's at twice the level it was in January, it's not very good. But we have the knowledge to make our schools pretty darn safe. And, uh, and we're doing that. And the data shows if you do these safety things, it is pretty darn safe. And the last thing I want to say is we have every bit of evidence, not only that, um, our staff are working spectacularly hard, but they're working spectacularly smart. And there's just not a lot of holes we're finding in what's happening. So I just want to appreciate that we're all back, that we're getting those benefits, that, um, that it is possible to do it, yes, with masks, yes, with tool testing, yes, with a lot of things we'd rather not have, but it is possible to be back in school safe and that we have a spectacular group of teachers and administrators and, and health staff that are keeping us safe and are doing a really smart job of doing that. So I appreciate that.
Anything else before we move to quarantine learning? So I've asked Meredith and Shawna to just kind of give you a summary. You've seen the three documents that we put forward. These are actually still a little bit in progress. We're finding things that, you know, we still want to tweak a little as we, you know, consider further. And that's, again, going to be the case as we move forward, we'll find, well, this, we need to shift this just a little. So, um, they can kind of talk to you about the process, how these got started, what's the input process has been like, um, with our staff to get these to where they are now. And then, um, you know, take questions. So turn it over to them.
So I'd like to begin by emphasizing the fact that these documents are intended to, um, function as really useful and practical guidance for teachers and families in a spirit that is true to the full trajectory that we have traveled, um, over the course of the pandemic and the point at which we live right now with the knowledge that we've accumulated and, um, the understanding that we have as it has evolved. Um, and in that way, I think that Brian, you know, did a great job of, of really capturing how our reality this year is different than it was last year. Um, but I want to highlight two key pieces that I think are, um, are implicit in the foundation of this document. Um, one of them is that life with everyone in school is in infinitely better than it is when we are not together. And I think that for anyone who has had the chance to make your way down the hallway of one of our buildings at any point this year, it, you can feel the difference. We are different people when we are together. And the guidance in this document is intended to scaffold, um, uh, an understanding about pandemic learning in, in these current quarantine conditions, um, that is, is rooted in, uh, that value and that belief. The other piece that is, is different now than it was last year, that is, I think, really important to acknowledge is the wear and tear that our faculty has experienced over the past 18 months. Um, having multiple avenues for learning occurring simultaneously and having to maintain each of those avenues for a population of students is far beyond what any teacher signed up for when they agreed to educate our kids and unsustainable in the long term. Um, and that is, is something that we learned the hard way last year, um, you know, which, you know, conditions were what they were and we didn't know what we didn't know at the time. And, um, we made it through successfully. And the reopening, um, advisory committee this summer was really clear about the fact that we cannot go down that road again. Um, and so this guidance is intended to function in a way that has as a working assumption that everybody is in the building as often as they can be for as long as they can be unless there is a brief interruption because of a need to quarantine. Um, concurrently, we are relying on some of the, uh, technology integration best practice that we cultivated last year uh, to provide almost exclusively asynchronous learning to students who can't be in the building for a period of at maximum eight instructional days. Um, in order to make sure that their connection to school and that their learning continues, but in a way that acknowledges that, um, teachers need to be able to focus on kids who are in the room. Um, that this, these three documents have been, um, vetted by a pretty comprehensive group of stakeholders across the district. We've talked about this with faculty. We've talked about this on the admin team. We have talked about this, um, with the curriculum committee. And, um, we've had, uh, robust building-based discussions um, that have, you know, peeled back some of the many layers and, um, revealed some changes that, you know, deserve to be made. Um, one of our goals was maintaining a consistency across the district in, in order to, um, ensure as equitable access as possible for all grade levels. Um, but I'm going to save the specifics for Shawna. Um, so that, that was my effort at, um, capturing the exigence of these three documents. And now, Shawna, if you wouldn't mind talking us through some of the specifics.
Sure thing, sure thing. Um, I think it would be, um, easiest for, for us to start at, um, the high school and, and work our way to Asa Adams um, through the middle school. So I know the board has, um, these documents and, um, they, um, so the high school and middle school having sort of the most experience um, just through last year in working with, um, different types of learning. You'll see that there is, um, a lot of parallelism between the two documents, um, that there are two paths for, um, to take. There's if a small number of students, um, need to transition to online learning, um, then versus a critical mass of students. When a small group of students needs to quarantine, this is, um, the students will be doing asynchronous learning, um, at the high school, um. Let me try the right document up. I have too many tabs open. That is the curse of all these remote meetings, um, is that, um, the school staff will communicate, um, with students how assignments will be provided. Of course, um, high school teachers all have their Google classrooms up and running. Um, and most of them are, you know, they're being used. So students are familiar with that. And that would be the primary conduit for the majority of the asynchronous information to be communicated back and forth. Um, that and most likely email. Teachers are going to plan and post daily asynchronous learning activities. Um, of course, the thread through all of these documents, you'll see that special edu, special education teachers um, and their staff will contact students to provide instruction and support according to their individual plans throughout this whole period. Um, and one thing that we have put in is that, um, in order to try and maintain some of that connection um, between school, um, and the students who are having to undergo quarantine learning, um, teachers are going to have some, some office hours. And of course, that will look different at different levels. But, um, you know, using Google Meet to, to be there to answer questions at, at a consistent time. Of course, this does not limit, um, students from making appointments with their teachers at other times to, to set up a one-on-one individual Google Meet. Um, I think you'll see that sort of mirrored, um, in both. When a larger mass of students, um, comes out, um, it becomes a little easier in some way for teachers to do synchronous learning. So if you had a whole class out, you might be doing some, um, greater elements of synchronous learning because, um, it becomes a little easier. Um, and you'll communicate with the students that way. And recognizing that when you have a larger number of students, you would need a, a greater sort of office hours. We just bumped that up to 30 minutes. So that's sort of a, a quick walkthrough of the high school document. Um, Meredith, was there anything that I missed that you wanted to add on, Meredith Diamond?
Oh, Shawna, you're doing great.
Okay. Um, the middle school, uh, document you'll see really does mirror, um, the high school document as well. Or you could say that the high school document mirrors the middle school. Um, with a lot of those same, um, elements, uh, with a small number of students, it being strictly asynchronous learning. We have the use of the Google classrooms to post assignments and learning activities. Uh, we have the same office hours.
I promise I didn't do that.
Oh. Uh, we have the same sort of, um, office hours where students can drop in. Um, and then when a larger number of students are out, you see, we have those similar sort of more of a potential move to synchronous instruction if that works for the, um, you know, greater number of students, uh, with a. greater number of students with a larger amount of office hours. Are there any questions from the board right now about the high school, middle school plans?
I mean, just to clarify a little bit for people watching, as I understand it, the first section is for when a few kids out of a class are quarantined or if their parents are notified they're in a classroom and choose to home quarantine. And then the second section is when most of our all, so the teacher's doing in-person learning and that's what they're providing for the students at home. And the second section is basically, it doesn't say it, but it's when most of all of a class needs to quarantine. And so that's sort of that class flipping to remote in that scenario. Is that, is that a fair summary?
That is a fair summary.
Hybrid situation. Especially at the high school and middle school where more kids are more likely to be exempt because of at least one condition.
Yep.
And just probably the, the thing that I would say is we've tried to switch our language so that this is clear, this is different. We're trying to use the phrase quarantine learning so people understand that this is a distinction from the remote learning framework of last year. And if remote learning is in our future, that will be a different frame than what this design of quarantine learning is. So we're trying to switch our, you know, vernacular around that and that's purposeful. So.
I'd like to address that question with just a brief qualification in that, you know, at Asa, having a whole class go remote is a clearly identifiable event that is, seems more likely than a similar event at the high school, the middle school because of the variability between, you know, grade levels and classes and the fact that students are constantly moving around. And, you know, this, as I believe we mentioned previously, this document was born Labor Day weekend when we learned that there was a full class of fifth graders quarantined, which was nothing we had ever anticipated happening until it happened. And, you know, as Kristen alluded to, that was a decision that was made based on, you know, discussion between the folks involved weighing all of these factors that we perhaps wouldn't have imagined colliding at once and creating the circumstance. And so the phrase critical mass of students is, you know, we acknowledge the ambiguity of that phrase. And the reality is we don't feel like we can anticipate what the circumstance would be when a class at OMS or OHS would reach a point of being largely quarantined or exclusively quarantined. And so, you know, this is in there to account for how we will handle that situation if it comes, but in that spirit of really not being able to predict what exactly it's going to look like at those two schools.
I think, first of all, Meredith, thank you so much. And Sam and Shawna and everybody else who's worked on this through all different committees and stakeholder meetings. I really, you know, appreciate the clarity this provides. And I think sometimes even with clarity comes ambiguity, but there is a measure of ambiguity with all of this. But I think this is, you know, to me, it's very clear. And I appreciate that even the language of small number is also helpful because it depends, you know, how big is that club? How many kids, you know, there's, there's, there's just going to constantly, constantly excuse me, be ambiguity. And I think parents just knowing this information will be really helpful because something that, you know, after or during Labor Day weekend, I was hearing from a lot of families, you know, we don't know the plan, we don't know the plan, our kids in quarantine, we don't know a plan. And I think, you know, like everything, we want to at least know there's a plan. And I really appreciate all the time and effort to do this. And I know, Meredith, you were talking last meeting about it being a collaborative process and that is excellent as well. What I wonder about is how do the teachers who are special education, to me, I see this as being a little, it's challenging for everybody, but perhaps even more challenging depending on some of our kiddos. So I wonder in particular about how the teachers who support special education students, you know, are feeling about this document.
So this is, this is a document that's really intended to provide, you know, district level framework that is applicable across as many contexts as possible. And the phrase there that addresses special education is, to be honest, a synthesis of responses that we received from Lisa Smith with details from each teacher about how they are going to handle this. And, you know, that is a, an interfacing, you know, document that is reflective of the fact that often the relationships between special education teachers and their families is much more intimate than you would have on another scale. And, you know, we're relying on the, those relationships and that communication to facilitate the provision of services, you know, across services in a way that underlies that, that bullet that really is deceptively simple, given what we're trying to capture with it.
Lisa, would you add anything to that?
Sure. And in talking with Shawna and Meredith when we were discussing this, I really love the wording they chose because they left it pretty vague because it depends on the needs of the student and it depends on the age level. Most of our high school students will be exactly like their, their regular education peers where they will have the supports from their special education teachers exactly the way they've been applied in school. Same for many of our middle school students. There are probably a couple of exceptions for students that will have difficulty accessing, you know, education via, via, you know, the Google classroom. And in those situations, we write an addition to their IEPs, their individual education plan called an individual remote learning plan that addresses how the remote learning plan will be different from the IEP. So it may be that, you know, you don't want a kindergarten student to spend so much time in the regular classroom and then 30 minutes for speech, 30 minutes for OT and then 30 minutes for reading. That would be too much time for a little kiddo to be on the computer. So it's really individualized.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear, you know, it feels, it feels good. But I was wondering, and thank you for explaining some of the details.
Shawna, you want to discuss Asa a bit?
Sorry, was muted there. Yes, we can jump right on to Asa. You can see I'm out of, out of practice because I haven't been, you know, using this to teach this year, which is nice. Okay, so Asa looks different. I mean, obviously because some of our littlest learners and their family, you know, you have the shift of middle and high school learners, they're becoming more independent. They're sort of beginning to manage their own learning. Not to say that some high school students don't need a little, you know, guidance as well from their families, but they really are much more independent. And when looking at Asa, we need to think about how to involve the whole family and support not only our littlest learners, but their families as well. So you see that there are parts that are broken out, you know, specific to K2 for some of our really little type, little, little learners. And there's, there are some different platforms. We are utilizing at Asa Adams, both Seesaw for grades K2 and Google Classroom for grades three and five. So there are some similarities there that there is sort of like a digital home for the classes for people to access materials. There are similar components where teachers are communicating with families about when and how assignments are going to be provided, when and how they're going to be picked up, recognizing that at the Asa Adams grade levels, you know, there are probably going to be non-technology, non-computer materials that are going to be distributed to students dependent upon grade level. And that the use of technology will be different at the different grade levels because of the age of the students. So for the small number of students who are going to be doing quarantine learning, you know, teachers are planning for daily English language arts, reading and math activities, not necessarily a lesson because sometimes it's hard asynchronously to, of course, provide that same level of instruction, but some sort of activities that they could be doing. Teachers are encouraged to provide materials for science and social studies, but really wanting to focus on English and math. Of course, our world language library, art, music, physical education teachers are also encouraged to provide activities for students to do in the quarantine period. And those are going to be posted to sort of a special Seesaw Google Classroom for those, for people to access. You can see that there are similarities in the special education and Title I and academic interventions as well that we have at Asa Adams. And instead of office hours for students at Asa Adams, we have more of this classroom connection time that teachers can utilize. It's a way for teachers to check in with their students and have some sort of classroom connection with them. And it was really great to attend the Asa Adams faculty staff meeting and hear some of the interesting ways, some of them were just sort of thinking aloud about how to, how to do that with, with their learners. And so that would be 15 minutes for just a few students out. And you'll see that if the whole classroom needs to transition, of course, it's a little more intense and wrapped up, ramped up in part because if a teacher has a whole classroom out, they have more time just to obviously focus on those, you know, the whole class that is remote as opposed to having to work with the students or the whole class who was quarantined. And they don't have to work with students who are still in the classroom.
Meredith Diamond, anything you'd like to add? So one of the, one of the sort of guiding principles that we mentioned earlier was a desire to have as much consistency as possible across buildings in an effort to, you know, make this as straightforward and understandable as possible, both for faculty and families. And an area that we have, we have circled around in the Asa document is the phrase that is in the first paragraph under the line about how there will be a one-day adjustment period for teachers to prepare materials. And one of the reference points that we used was a desire to ensure that teachers would always have tomorrow to deal with whatever happens today, right? So if they learn about a case that impacts their students at 8:00 AM today, they know that they have essentially until 8:00 AM on Thursday to get materials in kids' hands. And Asa teachers believe that that period for them needs to be longer and they're advocating for a period of, of up to two days to prepare. And so that is an area that we haven't yet, that question is one that we have not yet resolved for the Asa document. Questions, questions, concerns?
I tend to feel that two days of prep for an eight-day set of lessons is very reasonable. And I would, I would support that change in this document. Especially because, well, for so many reasons, but one is the teachers are prepping all the subjects and lost more hands-on materials than the middle and high school. Though I, I honestly, having been a teacher, I could also see two days for middle and high school because, you know, what we know is we don't
The answer is it depends, right?
It does depend. And to allow, you know, if, if families know, hey, it could take up to two days. Please be patient, recognize that you might not have support for two days. I think as long as families know that, you know, maybe it's sooner, but that's, you know, that's the maximum. I can also say, right, as a teacher, it's very hard to plan so far ahead because you're being responsive to what the students need. So I, again, you know, there's going to be some hits and misses either way with trying to give out instructional materials ahead of time. So if teachers feel they need more time, I personally would be very supportive of that.
Yeah, I think it's just highly dependent on how much Google Classroom or Seesaw is already a part of your, the rhythm of how you push out assignments and how you send things home and how your lessons that week align with that medium or whether your lessons that week align with more hands-on, lab-based, if you're in a high school, or activity-based or regardless of the level. So it probably just depends. And, you know, I think at times it might be connected with the same learning goals happening in class that week. And at times it might not be connected with the same learning goals happening that week. And that also would probably impact how long it's going to take to prep material. So if you have any other feedback on that, it's helpful and we can take that back and just kind of consider. I mean, one of the things we're trying to do is, is have this be a similar frame, but recognizing there are differences across each school level. Because we did, just to be honest, hear from our staff about equity, you know, what we're expecting of staff in buildings needs to feel as equitable as possible. And that's, that's really challenging because each school, each, you know, teaching in elementary school is different from a middle school, is different from a high school. It's just different. And so I think we were trying to line up these documents and, you know, I think we've done, we, I've been very minimally involved, so I want to put credit where credit is due. It's been, you know, accomplished really in, in large part. So I think subtle differences are okay.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I think this is a great document and I think it's going to set us up well for the semester. I mean, I guess on the one specific issue, kind of in the context of we're already saying it depends on, you know, when I think about a kid that may get sent home on a Tuesday, not having any instructional materials until a Friday, it feels a little long. So I'm really comfortable with the ramp up, right? It might be that the first 24 hours is not going to be as spectacular as what's coming 48 or 72 hours out the door. But I would like to see a kid get some instructional materials that gets sent out on Tuesday faster than Friday, which is what the 48-hour window is, I understand it's working out to. Doesn't mean it has to be the whole full-blown thing and, you know, spectacular lesson plans that now can be done with baking soda and water at home. And, you know, it doesn't have to be, there's shades of gray here, but I would like to see something going out the door for kids faster than Friday. But that's, that's just an ethic. I think this, these documents are good. I think there are clear communications between teachers and parents and all around expectations. And, you know, I would just like to say our teachers are, at the end of, I think most human beings on this planet are at the end of their ropes right now, but the teachers are definitely kind of reaching the end of their ropes. If you look at professions that are losing people, restaurants is number one, doctors and nurses, medical professions is number two, and teaching education is number three right now. It's just, it's just breaking people to try and continue to educate through this. So, and I like our, I like our staff and our faculty. I don't want to see outflow happening in our SC26. So, and, you know, you might think, well, we have such excellent teachers, they can just fly above this. But it was really kind of an honor to be at the last brick home community meeting. And, you know, maybe if our teachers were lowering their standards, they could, because they work so hard and they're so great, they could fly above this. But our teachers aren't lowering their standards. And so teaching multiple modalities is extra work and they somehow hold it together for a year, which I think the community and the board is very grateful for. But asking them to do it for a second year, I just worry is real recipe for losing some great teachers, which I don't want to see happen. So I think this document's a nice compromise with the concept of quarantine learning. When I read a quarantine learning, it looks like what already happens if I'm homesick, right? If my kids home sick, they're not going to be zooming into class and, but they're going to get materials and they're going to be kept up with the class and have some interaction with their teachers and they're not going to feel horribly behind when they come back after the eight days. So that just seems to me like a nice compromise point and I think it's a great document. So that just seems to me like a nice compromise point, and I think it's a great document.
I generally like all three documents a lot. I do have a couple of concerns. One of them is universal to all three documents. It says that in the instance where there's quarantine learning, whether it's for a small number or for a critical mass of students, it says that the teachers are encouraged to have this 15 or 30 minutes of interaction with students. I'd like to get rid of that ambiguity and just say they're required or will have. I can't imagine, especially in a situation where we've got a critical mass of students, that there wouldn't be kind of a session, a period of the day set aside for kind of office hour type of interaction or a community forum at the elementary schools. I do not like the wiggle room given by encourage there, and that's in the document in all three schools. I guess my biggest concern with the documents as they stand is within the high school guidelines. As I read the language of the high school documents for the critical mass of students in quarantine, teachers there are not, at least as I read it, not required to provide any synchronous learning whatsoever. It says asynchronous and/or synchronous, whereas the other documents require, AESA and OMS require synchronous learning, some synchronous learning to be provided for students in the event that we have a critical mass, and that the high school does not seem to provide that. So I would like that to be changed, to get rid of that, that particular language, that there has to be some synchronous learning there.
Can I just address that, Mark, before you, before you move on to the next one? So that one is one that we have actually already talked about, and we realize that there is, there is a similar sentiment captured in the OHS and the OMS documents in that same area, but the bullets don't align. And so we, prior to this meeting, suggested to one another replacing the OHS bullets that you see there with the two bullets from the OMS document, which essentially address how asynchronous learning will be communicated and how asynchronous learning will be provided in anticipation of both existing in that context. So that is an edit that has already been put on the table. So I don't know if you'd like to respond to that?
Well, so it would be clear then that the expectation would be at the high school that if there's a critical mass of students, that there would be synchronous opportunities provided in all instances, is that correct?
With asynchronous.
Okay, that's fine, I wouldn't expect it to be all synchronous, but I would certainly hope that there would be synchronous, some synchronous elements provided, and the language here didn't seem that, but if that change has been made, that's great. And then I guess the only other thing I'd say about this is I tend to agree, I think, with Brian on the 24 versus 48 hours. I think a 24-hour prep period is certainly fine, we wouldn't expect people to turn stuff around on a dime, but on the other hand, I think the situation that Brian lays out of, the scenario where a student tests on a Tuesday, has to go into quarantine for whatever reason, either by choice or because they do, have to, and then not maybe getting any material until Friday, I think that's a little bit problematic, so maybe a little bit more, like he described it as a ramp up, they'll get something, and then, you know, as we get a little further out, maybe they'll get a little bit more, or the caliber will go up, but I don't, I guess I'm, I'm not necessarily supportive of a 48-hour change. If push came to shove, I'd be more willing to support that at AESA than I would at the high school or the middle school. I do get Meredith's point about equity, I think equity, to be frank, is something that we didn't really do a great job of between the schools last year. I think there were some schools doing more than others, and I know that that caused a fair amount of resentment among the staff, and I get that. But if we had to make an exception in how long it took to prep, I'd be willing to give more time at AESA than I would at the middle school and high school.
So that suggestion, Mark, actually isn't, isn't on the table at either of the other buildings, that was only a suggestion that came out of AESA. But I would like to clarify that the expectation is not that teachers provide the full quarantine learning period scope of instructional materials subsequent to that 24 or 48-hour period. The, the expectation is that there is, there is a day, you know, and as to Meredith's point about the utility of Google Classroom, you know, for high school teachers, that's, you know, part of the rhythm, right? The materials come as they are posted, and, you know, they are posted with every class meeting. That obviously is not a rhythm that's as in place at AESA or as applicable for some of the age students down there, but that doesn't mean that everything needs to be provided at once, that, that is a clarification I think could be important for families to understand.
Thank you.
So I mean, in that language, maybe, you know, think about it as half a day provided in 24 hours and a full day provided by 48 hours, and then a full day kind of rolling out there after that, and half a day doesn't have a precise meaning, but just kind of in keeping with, get something out there in 24 hours. I understand it's not the full lesson plan, but then ramp it up to a rolling day at a time, full day at a time after that.
So the language that we have in there, the phrase "one full day" is intended to mean that you have a full school day to bring those materials together, and because today has already started, today doesn't count. So really, I think that the, my understanding is that the language that we have in there sort of captures that one and a half day where we have, you know, what is left today plus all of tomorrow in order to make this happen.
And, you know, I think the, back to your other comment, Mark, about encouraging daily check-ins, right? That, that was a, I think, a big point of discussion across some of the groups that I think teachers, there are some teachers who are having difficulty figuring out, you know, how can I, how can I fix this then? I don't have, maybe on this day I don't have a prep, or I have a very short prep, and I'm going to be trying to push out materials to these kids. And so I think, I think the mandating every day felt like at times that might be too hard to deliver on, and so that's why it was raised the way, the way it was. But if it's the whole class out, that is on top of the synchronous expectation. So, you know, I think, I guess I would like to hear more from the board if that's something that the board feels like should be mandated for the small number of students on a daily basis, because I think there were teachers who expressed that that would be hard perhaps some days, depending on which day and what else was happening on that day.
I can totally get that there's the day when, you know, you're at AESA and you don't have any specials, so you don't have, the only break you have is lunch break, you know, it's not reasonable to expect you to take your lunch break. So I get that those conditions can exist, but I also, and we did see this last year, I worry about equity for students, where some teachers are making a really strong effort to have this happen every day, and some teachers aren't, and I just worry that the word encourage leaves that scenario open as well. I mean, I don't want to get micromanaging from the principals, but, you know, I'd just like there to be an expectation that unless there's exceptional circumstances, it's happening, because that, that's where the student equity comes in. Not fair that some kids get this on a regular basis and some don't, just based on how important a teacher thinks it is.
There was, there was very broad variability last year in that, and that's what I would like to totally avoid. I mean, it was, it was all over the map, really, you know, some, some teachers provided huge amounts of opportunities for that, whereas others, you know, you could see one-go days without, or the whole week without that happening. And so I, that I would want to avoid. You know, Brian's point of, okay, there's a day where there's just so much going on, you can't do it, understood, but I generally pay attention to, pretty close attention to language, and encourage to me is not strong enough.
Yeah, we'll try to think of a better way to raise the expectation, because the expectation is that you're going to do this as much as possible, right? And so encourage doesn't sound like that.
And also, we were, you know, also dealing with a large range of teachers, this is not just classroom teachers, you know, we have specialists, so to speak, you know, how do they fall into this, and trying to work, work it for sort of the wide range of teachers and instructional staff that we have that would fall under this as well. And they're very tools.
I, I'll also share that we're assuming that the students will have the same time available, right? And especially if we're talking about AESA, that, that's going to be hard, that, that I think is an assumption we want to be careful of making, because one can say, well, someone has to be home with them, that's true, but that's someone who's probably going to be trying to work for.
Yeah, availability might not line up, right?
And also assuming the kiddos are healthy enough, like, for the most part, you know, quarantine hopefully will be kiddos who are healthy enough for instruction, but there can also be times where, you know, they're, they're really sick because of COVID. You know, is it, I wonder, you know, does the board, do members of the board here feel better if it was something, a different verb than encourage, and also something, you know, because it's going to be an eight-day plan, right? So we name a certain number around that eight-day.
Well, it depends, I mean, this is, quarantine could be four days, depending on where you're on the cycle, so.
Right.
I mean, I, I think we've heard the feedback, and I think that's what we needed to kind of go back and see if we can maybe change the language a bit to reflect what I think the intention is, which is not just, if, if you feel like it are, you know, we would like for you to. So the intention is definitely not that, so we'll try to figure out how we can raise that.
But, I mean, to your first point, but I think this is optional from the student's point of view. This is an opportunity for the student to see their teacher, but it's not a requirement to see their teacher.
The synchronous learning activities might, might be different, right?
Right.
That would be an expectation, and then I think that the issue that you raised comes into play there, but for the office hours element of it, you know, it's just like when we have office hours, and I don't require anyone to come to my office hours, but if they want to, they're certainly free to do so and stay for as long as they want. So I, I think here would be, you know, if the timing doesn't match up, okay, if they're, if they're not feeling well enough that day, they don't have to. Your point, though, about synchronous learning, and that's, that's a different concern, I think.
I also appreciate that there is a prioritization for the AESA one of like, here, here's what is, is required for the teachers, and then these other spaces are encouraged. You know, I know for us during, you know, remote learning, sometimes there was just almost too much because it was remote, everything takes a little longer. So I appreciate that, you know, it's clear what the prioritization is, and then there are other spaces where there may be additional activities. I think for an interim set of, of a learning framework, I think that's a smart move, and I, and I recognize that that does have equity issues. I don't, I don't know how to address that.
It can be overwhelming for our youngest learners to have, you know, all of these assignments coming out from all the specialists and, you know, and all the containers in the class, and so we felt, I think the prioritization is what it has to be.
We need to tap the screen. For the, you know, I think the point that you're raising, Mark and Brian, about equity and for the students and the variation between teachers, I guess one question I have for, you know, maybe this is a question for the middle and high school principal, but I don't know, maybe it's Meredith, but it seems to me that that would be kind of like a principal level responsibility to make sure that equity is occurring rather than a district, I mean, I don't know. Isn't, isn't that something that like falls for the principals to say like, hey, you know, are you providing, here's the expectation, as you said, and we're encouraging you to do this, and what are you doing, check in with me, let me know, and then if they see that variability, the principal would be like, kind of like the go-to person for concerned parent?
I think you're right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, definitely.
So, you know, I think if, if you guys feel, and you think it's a great idea to clarify the language, I'm totally on board with that. You know, I thought these guidelines were great, I can tell how much thought went into them. I completely recognize there's a difference between quarantine learning and remote learning, I think it's great that we made that distinction and used the language that way. I also think the fact that we have the opt-in for quarantine learning is going to address the concerns of a lot of people who have adverse people at home. And I think that having that as something where, you know, if there's a positive in a class and someone decides to put their kid in quarantine, they've got that option, and that's great. So thank you for that aspect of it. All right, is everybody happy with quarantine learning plan update?
So our, our plan will be, we'll just kind of refine this one last time, and then we'll push these out to, you know, all staff and all families, so that families can also, you know, review and understand these documents.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your feedback, and thank you to all who contributed.
So I guess we hit some cool testing, are we done with the cool testing topic there?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, so we're on to construction update.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give a few updates. The track, I, we posted out a picture to the Facebook page today to show people the, the surface is down and it's drying, and tomorrow, I think it's going to be a nice weather day, they're going to begin the striping, so things are really moving along out there. The bleachers arrived today, and they're starting to work on that assembly. The auditorium and in-cap classrooms up in the middle and high school are really coming along, I don't know if you noticed out back, the community, you know, has maybe noticed that, you know, the exterior, you can begin to see some of the auditorium exterior finalizing, taking shape with the siding. And took the board who could attend yesterday through a walkthrough, so they could see all of the updates, you know, down at AESA and walk through those finished spaces. They're still working on punch lists down at AESA, but really, you know, that, that space is in full use, as Kristen said, and, you know, they're, I think, still getting settled in those spaces, but fully using those spaces, and it's great. That school had such interruption last year with construction, and so I'm so happy that for the most part, they can just enjoy it now. And the middle and high school certainly is enjoying parts of, of the new space here, but, you know, we were trying to push the track and field to be ready, October 1st is not going to be ready, the bleachers mainly are the holdup there, there were two delays, one was COVID-related with their staff, and one was material, you know, just supply chain issues. So I, I'm not sure if it's going to be ready for our second target date, we're still trying to see how fast they can make progress, but it'll be ready, you know, for us to enjoy as a community before the snow falls, right? The track itself will be able to be used fairly soon, still waiting for some clarification about how long after all of this is done can we, should we wait to give the, the green light for, you know, people who want to come and run and walk on the track? But, you know, it's going to be such a nice asset, and we look forward to using it. You know, Brent's last day was last Thursday, and so Brian and I are kind of the, the last two remaining to coordinate the project, and, you know, I'm spending a lot more time on the ground with it on a daily basis so far. I've asked Bill Cody to really try to focus on everything else, not try to jump in and get up to speed on this, and he, his first day was today, and he hit the ground running on everything else that that job entails, which is great. So, you know, I think we're really, you know, I would like to say we're past the point of discovering undiscovered elements, but there's still those things coming up as we finalize these other areas. So, you know, I think the project is supposed to wrap up in February, so we don't have, we have, what, five months left to go? And so I, I think that, you know, I don't foresee any big issues that, that I'm hearing about right now.
So what is that, what is that second date on the?
Well, we were shooting for trying to have it ready for homecoming, high school homecoming, and we just don't know.
Has the press box arrived?
The press box is not here because the bleachers were due to arrive first, and they came today, and the press box is supposed to arrive either tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay.
Bleachers were supposed to arrive yesterday, but they.
Okay. Have they rectified the power issues up there yet?
Yes and no. The power can't be finished until the press box is finished, so that's kind of the, the reason it has to be sequenced, and, and the company might not finish the press box until Wednesday, the 6th at the earliest, they said. And so electric will take a couple of days, and I talked with them today, and they were checking to see if. And so electric will take a couple of days and they, I talked with them today and they were checking to see if Burson had done their part. They were waiting on Burson to do. So if Burson's done their part, then it's just a sequencing, waiting on the press box to be done to be able to do the rest of the power.
If they could possibly make it so that homecoming could be here, that would be awesome.
I'm trying.
Given how far behind they are, whether it's their fault or not, is perfectly blunt irrelevant to me. If they could get it ready for homecoming.
It would be nice to open the field with a homecoming event and, and Hall of Fame induction, but, you know, do everything we can to get it there. So that's my update there. Anything to add, Brent?
No, that's, yeah. Compared to the last three or four months, it feels pretty quiet. In addition to having less construction going on, it's all new construction. Right? It's hand cut classrooms and the auditorium. So they're, you know, not wanting them to do asbestos and all these kinds of things that were happening before. They're still unoccasional. Oh, the design was wrong, but those are much less common. So, yeah, and the financing has kind of settled down. We're between bonds. We'll have to do another bond, I think about a year from now. Yeah.
Just the rolling band.
Three years, isn't it? So we have two, two-year band. Okay.
Then we roll into another band though.
Right, and then to another, right. So we'll be doing something two years, next about a month, about a year from now and then. Anyway, that's kind of true one, but yeah, it's quieter. The next big thing, other than actually opening the stuff is, um, we got a lot of self-managed projects and some of them, like parking lots, we've knocked off. And the bleachers, we've knocked off as part of the existing project, but there are some other self-managed projects like the siding at A S A is a big one. And taking the kitchen down at A S A and making that into a classroom. Are things, and what?
Central office.
Right, and getting out of the 40-year-old temporary housing for the central office, or what we know is probably coming next, but we're hoping. I found that we have some money left over and then there's some other projects that are kind of in the queue after that. But that'll be the next big thing is taking on those self-managed projects, but that's something next summer.
Certainly circling back, and this is certainly not a major issue, but I know it's one that we talk a lot about and then we're, I believe we were supposed to get options and then I haven't seen any was the different options for dealing with that transformer out in front of middle school. But did you guys ever see anything on that?
Really, that's going to be up to us to figure out what we want to do and we can ask for C H A to design some.
But I thought we did ask Robin to give us some ideas and she said she would and then.
I mean, I don't know if I should say this at a public meeting, but they pretty much said it's in until the thing blows, nobody's going to go back there. So do what you want to do and it'll all get cut down the next time the transformer blows. So, you know, I, I think the scope of design is pretty wide. Put some arbivitae around a couple of sides, put some benches around a couple of sides. I think it's the theme I've heard the most often, but, you know.
Hey, arbivitae, they're terrible. They're absolutely terrible.
So pick your other favorite short view blocking shrub. You know, I know Aaron wanted to get one of these giant concrete rocks that would cook down over the top of it. I think there's a lot of options. Student art is another thing. It's, I think it's mostly an arctic to kind of put a direction on if it's honestly for a non-arbivite of view blocking shrubs and benches. I don't know. We need an architect, but if it's something we need an architect, we can do that. But it's really, I, I think at one point there is a suggestion that maybe somebody would run a student contest for a suggestion of what to do.
I think Aaron brought that up at one point. I, I don't, I don't, I'm not opposed to that idea. I just, I just didn't know if things had been presented or not, so.
There's, there's no formal plans, but I think the broad direction is kind of up to us.
Everybody agrees it's ugly and wants to cover it up.
Yeah.
A lot of cities, you know, artists paint them so that I see something too, offering that.
Yep.
And not, not that we would, you know, we could enlist, we'd have artists in the district. Students in particular, maybe an idea. But they look really cool. Like they can look really cool and then they don't look like transformer boxes. So it might be.
I don't know if Burson would allow us to. Oh, do we own that thing?
No, we had to.
We don't own that, right?
Right. But I don't know that that's as big an issue as obstructing access to it. I think the objection that they will have. So we have to just consider that. I don't think painting it is the issue.
Yeah. Yep. We own the direction, but some combination of landscaping or art, I think is probably what we're looking at.
So that's all there?
Yep. So next up, we have staff hires. We have a co-curricular slate. I would make a motion to approve the co-curricular slate as presented. Is there a second? Second. And I will read it just for curious people. So split job of freshman class advisor, Kristen Esplin and Jared Webb. A bunch of teacher mentors. So these are senior teachers mentoring newer, typically newer teachers. So down at A S A, we have Suzanne Neville, Ashley Sater, Angie McLaughlin, Jessica Barnes, Emily Jackson-Sanborn, Sarah DeCesaray and Candy Labrie. And at O H S, we have Erica Dixon, Chris Crocker, Shana Goodall, Kathy Van Doolman and Karen Fry. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the slate is presented? Okay, five to zero. So next up, we have the P L D amendment. Meredith introduced this to us last board meeting. The vote that was expected to take place in past happened. So it's now a decision for this district whether we want to offer basically these re-enrollments for annually for every, for a five-year period for new hires and a one-time re-enrollment chance for existing hires who did not choose to do this. This is in the state retirement plan for non-teacher staff.
Do you have any questions? We talked about it last time. Is something that you, it seemed like last time there wasn't any objection, so I went ahead and structured the, the vote if you wanted to move forward with it tonight.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm trying to see if I can.
Do you want the?
I've got the language. I mean, I was just trying to figure out if I have to read the whole thing or if I can, I think I can just motion. I would motion as the language presented in P L D amendment language to see if R S U 26 will vote to adopt the provision to 5 M R S 18252 dash C, P L 2021, chapter 286, as allowed by main course rule, chapter 803, and et cetera, as written and presented. Is there a second?
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. So that's a new option for staff. And next up is this new position for school health liaison.
Yeah. So as we've just talked about, we, we clearly, you know, don't have the capacity to maintain the level of contact tracing and full health support needs that we have demand for this year. And so we've put together a position that really doesn't, it, it doesn't exist anywhere in that district. It's not a school nurse. And it's not, um, you know, an ed tech and it's not a administrative assistant type of role and it's not an administrator role, but it pulls from pieces that all these people are currently trying to layer on to, you know, their jobs to, to make sure we're able to do everything we feel like we need to do. So we've come up with this position that it's a temporary, um, one-year fill-the-gap position that we're trying to keep really flexible in terms of qualifications because we have an ideal candidate mind and then we have, we can't find that, you know, people who have certain skills. We can train people to do what we're needing here around contact tracing and communication and basic, you know, answering a lot of questions from families. So I don't really have expected costs because it's going to depend on what we find. And, you know, I almost think it, it might be that it ends up being contracted service. It just depends on the person. But I, we imagine it more to be like a full position that I would hire that a central office person just for a year that's on a kind of negotiated contract to, based on their qualifications and experiences. So, um, you know, I, this would, if we got the right person, it would be such a huge help for, for lots of individuals, but, you know, it would involve weekends, nights potentially. So it, it has to be kind of a really flexible type of position. So this is what we're going, would like to ask you to approve and to put out and see if we can get applicants, you know? Who knows if we'll have anyone apply? But keeping it flexible gives us the best chance of, of maybe getting some, some applicants to help with this.
I think this is a great idea.
So I make a motion to approve the hiring of a new position, school health liaison for Messer Funds. Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Yeah, we've got to find a way to relieve the burden on many people it's falling on currently and we have to keep doing the job well. So this seems like the best solution. Any other?
I would just say if the public's out there listening, now that we have a lot of public on the call, but to share with others, you know, we're looking for someone who's really organized, attention to detail, has good tech skills, good communication skills. That's the basic skill set. If they have medical experience or nursing credentials, that's a bonus. But the basic skill set is really those other qualities. And if we can find someone with some healthcare experience or medical experience, that's, that's fantastic.
I wonder, Meredith, that's just a suggestion. Two things. One is, I heard you say excellent communication skills and I don't see that in here.
Yeah.
And I wonder if suggestion, take with it what you want, but this second sentence reading the ideal applicant is a credentialed nurse, right? That would turn off people right away. So I would almost like put that at the end more.
If that really is just a bonus, I think you're absolutely right.
Yeah, or right to say like.
Move that further down and rephrase it.
We will look at everybody too.
That'll scare a bunch of people off because they don't have, they don't have nursing credentials.
Yeah. No, good suggestion.
And then just encouraging again to just put it on our local pages too. And then maybe adding the benefit piece if it ends up being.
Right.
I don't know if there's a way to, we're just trying to make it sound as, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Intention is possible.
And just out of, out of, from what I heard from various people last year and at the outset of COVID, when the state really had to ramp up kind of hiring of, of trackers, right? And, and a lot of people found it really interesting work to do and kind of rewarding work that they were contact tracing and kind of making all these notifications and, I think the job could be appealing to the right person, right? You know, obviously any job can be appealing to the right person, but this is a pretty rewarding position, so.
I mean, you know, it, I agree. I, I think I find it interesting to, you know, to be engaged with, you know, it's certainly challenging like to understand all these regs and they're constantly changing and there are multiple systems. And I think for someone who enjoys kind of that kind of, you know, just trying to, um, you know, interpret all of these policies and help communicate, answer questions and interacting with people who, you know, are concerned and have questions and are, are so thankful to have someone to talk to to answer their questions. It can be rewarding, I think, for people to, to be able to, to feel like they're doing something to help in such a time of public crisis.
Other discussion? Are we ready to vote? All right. Motion on the table is to approve the position. All those in favor? Five to zero.
You know, great candidates and them are ready.
Yeah. Subcommittee reports, policy subcommittee has not met since the last board meeting. We'll be meeting, not this coming Thursday, but a week from this coming Thursday.
What letter?
We're, we got a couple of random code back to things, but we're basically ready to start the eyes.
Eyes, okay. Remind myself of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a big task, but we're, we're we're clearly in a better place than when Mark or Jake or I got on the board and we were kind of creating a whole policy manual from scratch. We're kind of rotating through them now and giving them all a second look.
If we, if we can stay on this, we're fine. We just can't get back to that. That was terrible.
No.
And we have our policy workshop coming up with Drummond Woods.
Right.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, that's next Monday. Yeah, so right before the next policy committee meeting. U T C, there is a special meeting this Thursday, which will be the first meeting I attend and then I think it's back to the regular schedule, but that's around hiring a director. And that's all I know about it so far. And Spruce?
Ironically, I got an email today from Spruce saying, are you still the representative? So I think that means there's probably a meeting coming down the pipe. So I'll let you know on here about it.
Okay. Curriculum Subcommittee, I'm trying to remember if we reported on that.
You did not, but I didn't.
The whole work was on the learning documents that you saw. So you've seen the output from the curriculum committee. Anything you wanted to add to that, Meredith?
No, our topics about technology were tabled until the October meeting. So we have that to look forward to.
Facilities and building committee, we talked about that. It does occur to me, one more thing. I know the board has gotten to see everything and I know the kids like their new restaurant down at A S A, but public hasn't seen it and they're paying for it. So I know COVID makes it really hard, but I'd like to start the conversation about how we could have a open house has all kinds of problems in COVID, but I'd like to start thinking about something we could. Maybe it's just a virtual tour. Maybe that's the best we can do, but I feel like and it's not a next week kind of thing, but and may, but maybe.
Maybe waiting till spring when everything, you get, you get everything's finished and the, the equipment's gone. And I think that would probably be the, because if you came right now, you wouldn't necessarily, you'd recognize that a lot had been done, but your reaction might be wild. There's still a lot left going on. It's, you know, the back park is still kind of disorganized. I think it would almost be better to, you could do a virtual tour of the finished places now, but for a big kind of open in-person event, I think waiting until spring has the advantage of hopefully COVID has approved by then, right? Plus everything's done, the equipment's out. And it gives everybody a better look at the kind of close to finished product that their tax dollars have provided, which I think is, is, would be, for me, that would be the better choice.
That makes sense. I wonder if we could get some high school students in a communications class to put a virtual tour together in the shorter term.
Yeah, I thought we could.
I don't know if I'm allowed to say anything right now, but I do know that, okay, I do know that Garrison Zoo made that video for his graduation with distinction project and got a lot of great feedback. I got a ton of emails. It was really quite impressive. Wanting him to do a follow-up one possibly with the drone in the schools as well as out and around both maybe like in a month or so, but also towards the end of year as well. And he's willing to do that. So I do think that there's him and some other high school students that would be more than willing to, to take that on and enjoy that project.
Great. That'd be great. You know, I was just thinking about the, if there was a virtual tour of some of the areas where parents have had questions about like the cafeterias. I mean, those are big open spaces. If, if there was a virtual tour where you were able to say like, here's the spacing, here's how far apart the kids are sitting. By the way, here's what we have in this room for ventilation and isn't that amazing? You know, I mean, I think that might help a lot of people who are concerned. Yeah.
Wellness, I know I owe Beth an answer to an email on that, so probably no more updates and I'm holding things up. Any other business? Future agenda items. I will just mention, you may recall that in the, I think it was early spring, we had a bunch of inquiries about student awards and we basically said we're in the middle of the budget. We're in the middle of COVID. Give us until the fall. So the fall is here. Unfortunately, we still have a lot less capacity than I would have hoped. I don't, for example, anticipate, you know, using survey, for example, in this topic, given how many other things we have to survey about, but I do think we need to close that loop in it. So Meredith and I talked and I think on October 19th or second board meeting in October, just start to spread the word that people have strong opinions on student awards pro or con. We will have a comment at period, a brief board slash administration discussion on October 19th about that. Second public comment period. We've still got a few people hanging in. Is there any public comment? Just go ahead and unmute if you'd like to speak. I am not seeing any public comment last call. Okay. Any requests from the board for information or follow-up? Seeing none, I would motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second. A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, five to zero. Thank you, everybody.